Evening, everyone. Joining us, I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Education for the School District of North Mondelec. Order. The roll call vote, please.
Chisholm.
Here.
Wabowski, here.
Hack.
Here.
Streeter.
Here.
Will.
Here.
We have all here present, and we have four. Report on public notice, please.
Thank you. President Chisholm, public notices and agendas were mailed to the Fidelac reporter. Radio station KFIZ, KFIZ 107.1, The Bold, WFDL radio, and agendas were posted in the district office, US Bank, and at the municipal building on Friday, September 23rd, the year of 2016.
Thank you. Please rest with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Minutes of last meeting and a special meeting were distributed to the board as part of the board package. Does anybody have any questions or additions or corrections to the posted minutes? If not, they'll stand approved as presented. Next item is the treasures report. Mr. Streeter.
Cash on balance. Cash balance on hand, August 22nd, 2016, $204,904.64. Receipts, 8/23 through 9/26, 2016, $1,328,769.76. Transfers from investment accounts, $500,000. Total receipts, $2,336,344.40. Expenditures, 8/23 through 9/26, 2016, transfers to investment account, or I'm sorry, Transfers to investment account, $700,000. Total expenditures, $1,905,907.81. Cash balance on hand, September 26th, 2016, $127,766.59. Transaction bills are recommended for payment as shown on the cash list dated September 26th, 2016, the amount of $919,441.78.
All right. Thank you. So presented to the board for approval, $919,441.78. Does anybody have any questions about the expenditures that were presented in the package? I have two. Yes. I, just as, out of curiosity, more than anything else, I see we've added some more cameras to our system.
Yes, we added, we had a safety budget in our maintenance of what we did is we added, we put two by the locker, we're gonna put two in by the locker rooms, the boys and girls locker rooms at the Horace Mann High School. That seems where, there seems to be most missing things, so we're doing in there. And then also, we're gonna put one out in the parking lot, which is gonna be good. And then, we also got one of higher resolution from the commons, so that we can see things in the commons better.
Great.
To let everybody know that student representative.
And if they thought they were already there, let them just keep thinking.
The other question I had was the expense for the company for security, no, I'm sorry, clocks. Does, does the clock expense mean the synchronization system is fixed? Or are we replacing the synchronized clocks with individuals?
Are we gonna yield to my business manager?
Yeah, actually, Dave, you wanted, you ordered those.
On our clock system, we had 26 clocks that have been either not working, like the one in the sound booth.
That's perpetual.
And it changed, changed the batteries, and so we decided that we were gonna get back onto our system, so.
So the, so the one in the tech booth is, is on the sync system again?
Yes.
Oh, excellent.
And it's working because they already.
The one in the sound booth wasn't even accurate two times a day. It was always wrong.
Yeah, then on the camera, not the, we're getting, we're getting two cameras in the parking lot, and actually, one more by door seven. I don't know if you stand corrected. We're gonna be safer, I thought.
I, I think it's, thank you. Any other questions for the expenses?
I would just really add quickly, that is, you know, as we look at what our long-term building plan is, as we look at our facilities committee getting together, those are things that we're gonna continue to do and not wait. One other thing, just really quickly, you might see in the bills coming up in the next month or two, is repair to the Bastiala Middle School floor. We now have, I like to call it Mon Hardy. I think it's a, a little hill there because of the buckling right there. You'll see that Dave was, he had some great ideas, he got an industrialized-sized dehumidifier, and Mike McDowell and the team, they put, it looks like ET's in there, I mean, and all that plastic, so we're gonna definitely, there, there's a big need for new floor in that area, but for safety reasons, we've had to move our middle school game tomorrow night all the way up to Mayville, so we're gonna probably cut that section off. Dave's gonna be talking with whoever, yeah, so we'll figure out what we can do for a fix right now. So, but just, let's safety, just so like if people ask as we continue to move on, just to find out that we don't just wait for resources, we try to allocate them as we go in order to make things safe and work, to be proactive.
All right, expenses, $919,441.78 to the board. What's the board's pleasure?
Um.
For approval?
Yes.
Second, thanks.
All right. Second, and any other questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Wabowski, yes. Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Hack?
Yes.
Thank you, and most of the carries. Books report, correspondence, I see some.
Correspondence, yes. We have, "Welcome to the World," Vincent Joseph, did you say Nick?
Mickey.
Mickey.
Yep.
Yeah, "Thank you for the congratulations on the arrival of Vinnie and the sweet Oriole gear he can't wait to cheer on, NFDL wearing it." So, that's awesome, if you wanna see.
They're, they're neat.
And this is for Lakin.
Which Lakin, Ian or Ian?
Ian.
Okay, so that's, that's me.
She's rocking her new gear this winter while cheering on the Orioles. Chris, Jenny, and Lakin, thank you.
Just to give you guys that, every time a baby is born, either it's to, it's a grandchild or a, a son or daughter, the district sends a onesie that says "Future Orioles," it's got an Oriole on there, so that's what those are.
And then, a thank you from the Hefter family.
Yes, Becky Carmo's, uh, family, her mother had passed away, so just, uh, reminders, if a baby is born, send a onesie with the note that says, hey, we're gonna be getting a bulletin board up next to where you come in and all of our staff is, we'll put all these announcements. And we got an engagement today, I think Noel, not Noel, boy got engaged. We got marriages, Bertrill's just had a baby girl, do we know the name?
Olivia.
Olivia, so another baby, we're just growing like crazy. And then, on the other side of life, when a parent passes away, or somebody close's spouse, what we do is we send a $20 check, or I deliver it when I go to the wake-up funeral. So, that's what the board does for the beginning and ends of life, and it seems like we've done quite a few of both of those as we've gone on, so.
And then I have donations, so these are all from the Mondelec Area Foundation.
Correct.
$650 for artists and residents at FLC, $500 for ALC Art Program, and $3,000 for One Pond One Book Program at FLC.
And what that's gonna be, is it's gonna be, every family is going to get an Orange Frog book, and then the curriculum stuff, that will be built off of that, so. And that's, and that was Amy Makar, the reading team, they're working together with the staff at Friendship, we'll probably roll that out, what, like, January, February?
Right. So, it said it brings some more information to the board next, or, next October, next month, in October, but yes, it's, we've got another grant we're writing to cover the difference between what we just received, so we're hoping that the new Rotary Club here is, is available based on the effort to potentially fund the balance of what the actual cost of the books are, so that's, that's in the works this week, so.
Nice connection, Sandy Rari, here's the, is on both, so it's beautiful.
Yeah. And if that doesn't go through, come and ask, let me know, because Aquanis Club of Fadelac does all kid stuff, so.
Perfect, yeah. Thanks.
And I think I'm gonna be speaking on the Orange Frog at the Rotary coming up soon. I found that out today, I think. So, if the Aquanis ever wants to.
Yeah.
You bet I can.
I'm your speaker, you betcha.
And I also, I think I'm going to, I might be going to Austin, Texas at the beginning of February to help, and there's a guy, you guys will even know about this, a guy from a big company coming on Thursday to see how Orange Frog's impacting our schools, so.
Perfect.
All right, is that it?
That is all that I have.
Thank you. Item H, student council report.
At this time, I'm very excited to announce our student council president, and one thing I can guarantee is that she will be able to be here no matter what the weather conditions are. And she will be here for the entirety, because I know that her parents are fine with her being here. At that, I'd like to introduce Paige Stedoff, who's the student council president of Horace Mann High School.
Okay, so, this week is homecoming week, so the male school and the high school have their designated dress-up days, but in the past week, the, in the male school, they have a group or club called the Oriole Leaders, which is a combination between student council and National Juniors Society, and it's like more of an elite group, so you have to fill in an application, you have to get a letter of recommendation, but the students had just gone recently to a leadership camp this past Friday, and in the high school, we have Powder Puff on Wednesday night, and the Spirit of Six Thursday, and the dance on Friday, also, no, Saturday, and then game on Friday.
Is there anything else? This is a time you can work with Ms. Freeman, also, if there's anything else at the high school that's needed or interesting, feel free to allow the board to know what's going on at that also.
Do you wanna share maybe about the auditorium and our first couple of days of student council?
Oh, yeah, um, so we have four new Ford Exchange students this year, Tim, he is from Germany, Yamil from Bolivia, Irene from Spain, and there is, Nicklet.
I gave this more.
Yeah, Nicklet, or she goes by Nikki, and she is from Hungary, and the first day of school after the big district-wide picture, we, as a student council, had brought them up and introduced them to the school.
And Paige and student council members have done a great job, a lot of them are involved in our student ambassadors program, so with the tremendous amount of new students we've had, they've done a really nice job, so, absolutely.
Our student ambassadors program is new this year, so it's kids that have, are like involved in multiple things that'll help the new students if they come at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, whenever they come, find their classes, have a friend from the get-go that they can go to and feel comfortable right there.
Joe Gable introduced that program, and tons of people helped out, so. Also, feel free to grill the student council president.
No, no.
I feel like the student council representative might be at a slight disadvantage.
I, I did tell her she's right next to her, so she needs anything to, you know, she's got her back.
Helps for the answers.
Well, wait, welcome to the, to the position. We look forward to, to hearing from you at the board meetings, and you're, you're kind of our conduit for what the, what is student life, what's, what's going on at the high school, so we look forward to your report at the board meetings. Thank you. Next item is, item I, citizen input. At 7:17. Is there any citizens that wish to be heard at this time? Seeing and hearing, I know he's looking. I will close the citizens' input portion of the meeting. What did I say?
7:17.
7:18, thank you. Item J, superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Chisholm. We introduced Paige already, very excited to have her here, look forward to her insights, as you said, throughout the year. Also, the next thing that we'll talk about is, this is gonna be a little different, what's gonna happen today is, you're gonna hear a lot more from the administrators than you normally will. Pretty exciting about how they develop their board reports, you've been exposed to their newsletters, they send them to you every week as they develop them, so please check those out. Also, know that if you have any specific questions about the schools, please get involved and ask them about it. What we're gonna do is, as the year goes on, you'll see where we have administrator building department updates, just some things I think at the beginning there that will kind of, I think, shed some light, especially with Kerry Joe and with Mike and with Adam in a new position about what they're doing and how things are going, they're gonna share some big, big items with you. Also, throughout the year, as you get a chance to get into schools, I'd really like at, when we go to the superintendent's report and as you review the administrator's goal updates, if you had an opportunity to get in the building, if you saw some things, if you have some things you wanna share with the rest of board members, please let me know. Pretty interesting, you know, how we have a liaison, we really want you to get into the schools, see things, email the principals, ask them questions. I was at my superintendent's convention, and the state one, probably two weeks ago, and somebody did a presentation on this new idea of how you can have, like, a board member hooked up in a school, and then what you can do is, one of the neat things is, is you really want them to get involved in school, but you need to vet through and make sure that they're not too nosy, make sure that you can trust them, you can do these different things, but once you can do that, it could really have big upside. They started this last July or January, and it was, started to go really well, so they wanted to make sure that we heard about those things, and, and I just wanna let you to know that this is going on, is remarkable. I mean, it was, that's, you guys, I love you guys, you're great people, you give a lot to this, the district, you ask the questions, but the trust in what we have and what we built here is something that, just understand the, the work and effort we take, it really does matter, because it isn't like this everywhere, but please take the, the channels, the information, we all wanna get better. So, pretty interesting, fun stuff. Survey distribution and update, because of, and you're gonna see this also when we look at our fund balance, and we'll talk about that during the budget, but because of our increased state aid, and we know that we went about 7% this year, maybe even closer to 8, increased state aid, that means that our local levy is dropping, we still have the same amount that we can raise, we have a revenue cap, but our local levy's dropping. What we've done as, what you have done as a board through the recommendation of Maria and the administration, is to maintain that levy at $9.64-ish, we know that's different in different areas, in different municipalities. And because of that, we've maintained doing that to be a good, we've done that for a couple reasons. Number one, consistency, you know, if we're able, we keep it right at that consistent number, so people understand this is what it is, and then it'd be like if you made more money, you'd pay off your car because you get extra money coming in, or maybe make more payment on your house. What we're doing right now is that same thing, with that extra money that we have, so as we have more state aid, less locally is what our levy is, we can over levy to get, to help pay down debt, referenda debt. Now, as we were going through all these scenarios and ideas, remember when we looked at our, our survey, that if we were to borrow $25.4 million, that would be an additional $137-ish, $400,000 home, once you took the $12.6 or $4 million, and if you had moved it from $9.64 up. Well, lo and behold, because we've been having this practice of maintaining our levy rate and then over levying so that we can pay down our debt, we are actually over levying to pay down our debt this year about how much?
$600 and some thousand.
Yeah, so we're looking at about 90 cents to the dollar. So, what that means is, is how we had our survey first saying, if we maintain the $9.64 and we would go out to a referenda, instead of it being $137 per $100,000, it would actually be about 40 cents or 50 cents additional, which is significantly different. I mean, so you're looking at, you're looking at $50 per $100,000 home instead of $137. We know we have different other, you know, about $800 million in projects too that we're looking at, that also have an increased levy rate. So what we wanna do is, as this survey goes out, make sure that it reflects how it would impact because of what we've done. Does that make sense? So, that's why the survey was gonna go out next week or the week after, it might be a week delayed, because we wanna make sure we get those right numbers in there. And so, that, Mike Clark from Baird, Maria got all that information and data to him on Friday, I've worked with, with school perceptions and thanks also for my pointing in some right directions. We've got everything set up for the mailings and everything ready to go, we're using Medevan Press, the school perceptions said they gave us a good price, so there's no real need to look anywhere else, they've done a lot of things for us in the past, so we're all set, ready to go, just waiting on these numbers. The survey will be the same, it's just that debt, how that debt chart looks, and then the impact of the referenda and what that will cost, is that, so that's what's setting us back a little bit. Marie, anything you'd like to add?
The only thing I'd like to add is that Mike has offered to come and talk with you, maybe, you know, there's graphs out there and there, because you're gonna have community members coming to you and maybe asking for more detailed information, so if you would like Mike to come and talk with you, we could either do a special board meeting or maybe a segment of the board meeting, you know, he's offered that out, so I'm just gonna offer that to you.
And I would offer to you, and I very highly recommend, maybe we can get him on that Monday in November, before Thanksgiving, that board meeting, or no, Monday after Thanksgiving, so it'd be the 20th, I believe. If we can get him there, we're gonna have that data meeting on, and I think it's the 16th or 15th of November, I'd sent that, well, I can see it right there, it's 16th of November, and that's where we'll look at the data, if you remember, we're gonna have a special meeting depending on the data, of talking about what that question would look like in December, and then we'd have a, then we'd look at, and then we'd have a special meeting with just idea if we were gonna go to referenda with the question in January, I think that would be a great time for Mike to come and explain some of these things to, to you guys, so you have an idea.
What is the timeframe of getting that? So, if.
Early February is when we would have to have, we're still on a good timeline to, yeah, to have it set. If, if things go the way, and there is, if there is a positive feedback that we can accelerate our, our, our long-term building plan, our, our facilities plan, we would have a meeting, I believe it's the 9th, don't, it's a second, it's a second Monday in Jan, it's the 9th, I am right about that, in January, and then depending on how the board forms that question, we would then finalize that question the 4th Monday in January, which then would give us plenty of time, if it's a question, two questions, whatever it is.
Cause I just talked with our clerk this weekend, and she.
Oh, Ms. Fryberg, how's she doing?
Yes, she's great, her daughter got married, anyways. And she said, "How is the survey going?" And I said, "Well, it should, you know, as far as I know, it's, it's on track," and she's like, "Well, it's November, January," so.
It's what, 70, how many days?
75 days, I believe.
And it's not working days, it's calendar days. So, and it's, Abe, it's a second Monday after the first Tuesday, and April, I believe, is when the election is, am I right on that?
So, I'm not doubting that, you know, I'm just.
But no, so just, what you had is that we will make sure that one of our favorite, we have many favorite citizens of the School District of North Mondelec, including the clerk of the county, Ms. Fryberg, so we'll make sure that she gets that information, and hopefully, after the election, we wanna get some no brainers through, and that's gonna, one of the first things we'll do is I'll talk with Representative Schra, Representative Thienzfeldt, as they get re-elected, I'm guessing that'll happen, then whoever our new senator is, and maybe get one, how many signatures we need, that it's based on, you know, on how much of a Class II city you have, and then board can set that, so it could be 25 instead of 100. So that's something that will work too, that just brought up to my mind, you talking about the clerk, so. Any questions about the survey process? It's a little bit slower, but it's coming. We're actually gonna have just under 5,000 mailings that will go out, it's also going out electronically to all of our staff and every parent that we have an email of, so should be cool. And get this, the rate for sending out just under 5,000, it's gonna cost us less than $900 bucks, because we have a nonprofit thing that we set up when we did the OAC, and then, but we're gonna go, so I'd save it quite a bit. All right, well, city celebration, if you're available, please let me know by Friday if you could, it's gonna be, I believe, at like 7:30 in the morning, not like it is, it'll be in the basement or in the conference area of Agnesian, you can see all the other different companies, Fidelac School District, Beagle, Stolen, Thieves, Whistup, they're gonna be also recognized, we won a gold for the workplace award, so that's that, so if you want to, you're more than welcome. Before you go, I'd like to get a picture of you together dancing or running, and I can put in the video, so we'll get that in a second, if that's okay. Or if you wanna do a pyramid or something, we'll spot you. All right. Let's see, anything else on Noel City, we're good to go there. Upcoming meetings, annual meeting, October 17th, Safety Forum, at 6:00 PM, we'll get out information at all of our conferences coming out. It used to be more attendant, we try to be proactive, we do this before every one of our October meetings, just to go through, Samantha's now taken over as being our safety coordinator of the district, we'll go through our, our emergency response plan, answer any questions that you have about Alice, or how we go about thims, and what goes on, and how we go about handling safety. So that's coming up. Then we have a normal, regular October meeting, which is after that, and then survey data review, which is, should be still on the 16th. And then just, we'll go, the future upcoming items, policy updates, I've seen Richard Zim in a couple weeks, we'll probably start doing those again in January or December. 16, 17 calendar, if anybody has any ideas, I'm gonna reach out to Jim to see what Fidelac looks like, if we can coordinate something close, I don't see why we wouldn't. I'll get Jerry Scadella, he's always on my calendar committee, and anybody else who wants to, you're more than welcome, it's really exciting. And then staff compensation, that's one thing that we wanted to review, our escape plan, and also how we're, how we're looking at continuing to increase the rate at which we compensate our employees that are doing well. Fall athletic celebration, probably November that'll be when we get our all-conference left. Mike come in and talk a little bit about all-conference and review what happened in the summer and this fall. And then I wanna bring up Darius Hayes, I'm gonna invite him to our next meeting, he actually went to Badger Boys, but then on top of Badger Boys, he was the representative to the national, went out to DC, so that's pretty exciting. And Samantha also has some good news about Miss Milky, and then, and we'll have again. We're gonna start in the, we're gonna talk about this administrative meeting tomorrow, we're gonna start every week sending out press releases. We're not getting any press right now, that's because there is like nobody working at the reporter anymore, so even when I send all of this stuff, I got Spencer tomorrow, KFIZ, but that's about it, but we're gonna start to send out press releases every Friday, that's got something in there that they can put into the Action Advertiser or the reporter. We're gonna start doing that and getting used to it, we're getting, that's gonna be part of our Orange Frog initiative, to spread that good news, to share that information, so. So, so told me to that, we're gonna do that, we're gonna talk about that tomorrow, cool? All right. All right, now, I wanna back up, and what we're gonna do is just talk about some of the big things that happened at the beginning of the year, and also, I think it'd be good for you to get kind of into the mind a little bit of thought process of how things are going for our newest team members, Kerry Joe, Michael, and Adam, in his new position, and once again, revisit the wonderfulness of Horace Mann High School and ELC and People's Services, so we'll start with the FLC and the new beginning, and so Kerry Joe, if you wanna say a little bit about how things are going on, and then, sure, he can, he can, he can get up, or he can sit, whatever you wanna go.
Wow, if I can sit, I'll sit. Okay, so my topic for updating was on the arrival and dismissal process, and just how we're looking to work on little things that'll increase the learning time and access that students have to teachers. So, past practice was that the building doors were generally open to the building, starting at 8:00 AM, just literally open, and then at the end of the day, parents and family members could come into the building, it started out at maybe 3:20, and it started creeping back and creeping back, and so about 3:10, we had families and dogs and other things in the building. So if you think about when our students, our student day starts at 8:30, and our student day ends at 3:30, so we potentially had traffic in our building for a half an hour before school started, and then we had traffic in the building about 20 minutes before the school day ended. And from a safety standpoint alone, it was a concern, but also just for the, the amount of potential distraction that it created for students and for teachers, was just something that was worth looking at. So, we implemented a change, there's a lot of signage that was up around the property that we really just weren't adhering to either, so we made note of that and just looked at what was the intent initially, and why was that put up, what was the thought behind it, because obviously, there had been some thought at some point in order to go out and get signs made and, and, um, so in looking at the entire facility, the front circle is intended for our bus traffic, so we, we did ask parents not to use that front circle for drop-off or pickup, so that it was available to our buses. Along the south side of our building, there's a lane that runs parallel between the building and then the parking lot, the staff parking lot is there, and that is supposed to be restricted for our specialized transportation, for students who are receiving transportation services through their IP, sometimes it's parents that are still providing that transportation, and then also, that's where our morning. where our morning buses come through to drop students off for the breakfast, and then also for the morning playground time. So there's a back parking lot that was very underutilized, even though it says drop-off for parents. So we just made sure to actually enforce that, the back parking lot is where we have students drop off, they can cross, and the playground is right there. We do still open the doors for students, there's the 8:25 warning valve, so we do provide supervision starting at 8:15, so there's about 10 minutes that students can have an outdoor recess before school starts. If students are coming for breakfast, we have one door that we open on the side of the building, it goes right into the cafeteria. So that opens at 8 o'clock, and breakfast is served from 8 to 8:20, unless we have a late bus arriving, then we'll make sure that we serve later. There wasn't a real clear path for students to travel, you could kind of follow along the graphs and the shed. So Dave and his crew painted a crosswalk for us, and Officer Sean, myself, and Penny Surway are out in the mornings, I'm out when I'm able to, but Officer Sean is out there. Occasionally, we have other patrol that comes if he's not available. And then Penny's our greeter, she stands outside of the cafeteria door every morning, starting at 8, watching the kids, letting them in, making sure they're coming in safely, and just giving friendly reminders if families are, are using the lane as it's not intended. So overall, we've had really good feedback from our parents, a lot of them are really thankful that the building's not wide open. They, they actually feel like it's more of a community, because when they come in in the morning and their kids are playing, they're getting to know the parents of some of the other kids that maybe they wouldn't have met before. They're getting to see their children interact socially without really kind of having to hover around them. So we've heard really positive feedback. We have lines painted on the back playground, where classrooms line up, and then their homeroom teachers come out, or the classroom teachers come out to greet them every morning. So again, the parents have the face and the name with the teacher, which some families don't always get that opportunity. So the going home process looks a little different again, instead of opening our doors, we do ask all families that are doing parent pickup to do so on the back playground. So again, our teachers walk students out to their lines, parents are able to come to the line directly to pick up the student, or they can park and wait in their car if they want their child to come out to meet them, or sometimes they also just kind of, or if they're not parked, they follow like a circle around the parking lot, and their, their children come out to them, and they get in the car and continue driving. Our bus students all line up in the gym, and we have a teacher assigned to each bus line that walks them out, which last year we had two teachers doing that, so now we have one for each bus line. We also have all of our walking students, walking out on the north side of the building, there's the sidewalk and the crossing guard there, so they're all going around the other direction. So again, there's more, more structure and more control, I guess, of how the traffic is flowing around the building, so we don't have kids in cars all over the place. So again, really favorable feedback. We've had some families that park out by the field, instead of using the back lot, and that's obviously, we've talked to them, that's fine. Other families have shared that some of the things they do is they park on the side roads, and have their child cross at the crosswalk with the crossing guard and walk to them, which is perfectly okay as well.
Now, I wanna just tell Carrie Jo, it was, there, there was some parents that were angry and mad, but they didn't understand the whole process, so his parents were really mad, and had some issues with some other things. Carrie Jo's done a great job making sure that, number one, it's about student learning and student safety, and also then when I look at the efficiencies of the staff and the time, cause our teachers and Debbie and Kathy at the front desk, they wanna serve people and help, so if a parent would come in, they wouldn't say no, but then that would mean that they wouldn't be able to be as efficient and help as many people as they could. So I'll thank Carrie Jo for, for staying with that, really, if, when you walk, if you have not been to Friendship, please go in there. Debbie will talk a little bit about our, our new, some of our new programs that are working with our students that have more needs, but it just, it feels really nice, and it feels really organized, and it feels that, I think there's a lot, there's a, there's a lot of great things going on. So I wanna thank Carrie Jo for how she's handled the situation, making some significant, just kind of some change in forces, some things, and doing a great job. Any questions that you guys have from Carrie Jo about the beginning of the year, how it's going with Red Friendship?
Great. Thank you. And like to thank Steve too, he stepped over in the morning a little bit at the beginning of the year to kind of see how things were going, he checked in as well, Mike checked in, two parents in the boards, the whole boards, you guys all should know what's going on, but thank you all, I mean, that's been really helpful, to have kind of your, your eyes and looking at it from a different lens too.
It was cool, I know that the community felt comfortable communicating, you also, about some of these changes, and I was very good, and I like how, I would direct the right to Carrie Jo, and she helps out, and I love that transparency, and when you can understand, it works, it works really well to keep it better. One other thing too, if you wanna comment about the open house, we're not having it this year, because of scheduling, and then kind of what the plan is for as we move forward, to get something like that if we're going to next year, and how that could work.
Okay. I'm not sure if this is the direction you're thinking, but I'll take a Spanish. So there had been a question, we have our PTO hosting the book fair this week, there was an assumption that we were having an open house, which when I looked at a calendar when I first came on board, I didn't see an open house, so I never even gave it a thought. And PTO assumed there was one, no one else, there, so there was a little bit of, well, is there, isn't there? So we had some conversation around that, there's, there's not going to be an open house, but we are still having the book fair open. I offered to work with the PTO back in, well, last, their early September meeting, we got together informally, and said, you know, there's a lot of different opportunities that we can still provide to get the school open. My understanding is that the open house was a voluntary event for teachers, so sometimes families would come in and their teacher wasn't even there anyway. And my thought on that was, if I'm a parent and I'm taking time out of my evening, and I come in and my child's teacher's not there, that might be more frustrating than not even having an open house. So we had made the decision to formally say we're not doing an open house this year. We've talked about doing potentially like a gallery walk, or some other things throughout the building, throughout the year, where families again can have access to the building. Perhaps teachers will be there, but we'll frame it as such where it's not an, an open house per se, but there's different purposes behind it. Our back-to-school night was really, really well-attended, and I think, you know, in looking at, maybe that's something we surveyed families about for next year, is back-to-school night or open house, and most families do prefer to have that, that back-to-school night, bring in supplies, meet the teacher, find out who, who's in the class, and go from there, so. Is that covered?
Yeah. Tell them the big changes.
The other thing is our PTO has established a different, we, actually, it's growing, which is a really exciting thing. And they've also established that meeting times, so they're actually gonna be meeting the same Monday as the board meeting the hour before, so that's potentially going to help. So I've asked my staff to consider attending at least one PTO meeting out of the school year, and also one board meeting, so ideally, if they could roll back-to-back, and then create some flexibility for them, you know, to maximize their schedule. So we're hoping, we're hoping that there's just a little more involvement, but again, I'm really excited about the PTO and the number of people we have and what they're doing, so.
Excellent. Welcome aboard. All right, next we'll go to Bams, and Dad, so Mike, if you want to, just talk a little bit about what's going on at Bams, and then what I'll do is, Mike is talking, he is our template guy, you're gonna notice as you looked at these, every school has the same template for their goals. So I'll let, we'll turn it to Mike, and go ahead, Mike, explain this, and a little bit about the Gonzalez experience here at North Final Act.
Well, the Gonzalez experience has gone very well, thanks to everyone's support, families and students, just outstanding. Let me explain the templates first. Like Mr. Sedaros said, each of our board reports have that as a cover page, it has all of the district goals, getting better at literacy, engaging in effective instruction, and creating and maintaining a happy, positive emotional environment. Those are our, our goals as a district for the whole year. Then for our building, SLOs, our, our learning objectives, for Bams, it's focusing on improving writing in a nutshell, and then our district has professional practice cornerstones, and they're similar for each building. For our building, it's improving literacy, what are we gonna do in our practices to make that a reality? We're gonna be looking, particularly in the classroom, are, do our teachers have learning targets explicitly stated? Do our teachers vary the level of questioning in terms of asking the complex questions in addition to the simpler questions? Are professional learning communities, PLCs and SSTs, our student support teams, how do they meet, and what can we do so that we can better measure academic data, and how we can ensure that students are growing? We're looking at co-teaching, we're looking at the Oriole Way as means of effective classroom management, and obviously, Orange Frog and Positive Emotional State. Those are all the things that all of our schools are working on, and then that would be the cover. And then what the board report is gonna comprise of is, what are we doing that month for each of those cornerstones? And sometimes the cornerstones are not gonna be mentioned, like this one doesn't have Orange Frog, but obviously, we're trying to make sure that everyone's happy and all the time, and we don't have any specific things for this month on that. But in terms of improving literacy at Bams, we have shared what we've been doing in the last few years in terms of creating a common language in the classroom at Bams, and now we're working with the high school in terms of what does reading, is reading and writing comprise of? And you can click on those links, and I shared this document with all of you in, you know, on Google Docs, where you can peruse it, through it at your own leisure, but hopefully this works. But we're trying to establish a common language of how teachers can instruct on reading and writing, and what does it look like in the classroom, so I think we'll wait for that to pop up. Cause I think that's the number one step, is to ensure that every teacher, grade six through 12, introduce these concepts to our students. So it's, it's what is the Oriole Way in reading, and what's the Oriole Way in writing, and what are some of the, the things that, no matter what grade you're at, your reading must have these elements, and your writing must have these elements, huh?
And it's coming.
It's coming.
It's so almost there, guys.
All right. So what does the reading, so that we don't have to endure like the writing one, but once it gets there, I can show you that?
You're doing a great job, Phil. I mean, you wanna talk about your drive home from East Lansing?
Oh, yeah, I drove, I drove five hours, no, actually, seven hours from East Lansing back home.
And that's how long it took for this to load?
Yeah, and, and, but, this is still loading by then, but anyway. Sorry, I'll, I'll just, I'll just continue. So you can look at that link at your own time, if you have all this time in the world, but we are working with the high school to kind of come up with a common language about what does reading and writing entail in the classroom and in instruction. Our building has created, we have sustained-sided reading and sustained-sided writing times throughout our schedule, particularly on block days, and our, our RTI team created the curriculum for that, and that you can look, review at your own leisure. Our September activity is creating a passion poster, so we are asking our students, what is your passion, and what are three jobs that are associated with this? In October, we're gonna have the topic of word choice, so we're trying to introduce to our, our students, we're doing a combination of academic career portfolio work during the SSR, SSW time, as well as working in literacy. So word choice means, what, what are you choosing in your writing? Right? What are you, what are you choosing in your, in, in terms of how, how you, like composing your sentences and all that? We completed our starter reading assessments, we have identified students in unit interventions, and we have placed them in literacy intervention courses with parent permission. We have 12 out of 18 slots, we're still working on six other students. These classes really help, they're 18 weeks long, very intensified, focused on trying to improve setting reading skills in students. Our writing assessment is gonna be done on the 27th, and that's another great tool that we use to determine what our, our student strengths are, and what our student areas of improvement are needed, and then we can tailor our instruction in terms of that. We worked very hard in the summer to create a rubric, which is linked to your, to your document, as well as every time that we have an assessment, and we have three of those throughout the course of the year, our teachers will meet with our students, and will create a plan of action for improvement. So it's very one-to-one interaction piece that will allow students to plan their goals and, and set appropriate goals based on whether or not they met their, their requirements or not. A, a good thing that happened today is that we enrolled in the Milwaukee Wave Reading Program. The Milwaukee Wave is a, is an indoor soccer team, and they have a program where they give free tickets to students if they meet reading goals for a one-month period. It starts October 7th, ends November 10th, and we're setting a goal of 1,200 minutes per student. We have time, we have SSR times, you know, in like an hour of, of, a week, but we also are encouraging our students to read at home, and to get the free tickets. Learning targets and level of questioning, we have faculty professional development dates scheduled in October and November to deal, you know, to, to, Adam's gonna probably come to our faculty meetings and provide professional development in those areas. We also have learning walks that are scheduled, where we're gonna go to different schools and, and kind of just informally assess what we see in terms of what teachers use for learning targets and levels of questioning. Professional learning communities and student support teams, Kim Broden is working with our teen, grade-level teams to come up with protocols, so that when we discuss students and their concerns academically or otherwise, we have a firm protocol, and we don't waste any time, we try to be solutions-based. And these are things, not that we're not solutions-based, but we're trying to just be more effective, cause the more effective we are, the more we help our, our families and our students. And in terms of life, career, and college readiness, we have a homework page online that the public can, can, can access at any time, so that students can't be pulling the fast one on their parents. We have various clubs that are forming, students are coming to me, they're very excited, they wanna form a book club, an art club, a rollerblading club, a skating club, there's just a whole bunch of excitement in the air about that. Our sixth graders completed their strengths inventory, and we're gonna have a top three strengths for each of our 96 sixth graders in a couple weeks, so then we can build relationships with them. And we're doing academic career portfolio activities in October, sixth graders are discovering who they are, seventh graders are discovering where they're gonna go, and eighth graders are trying to figure out how they're gonna get there. And there's some important days, like we have a pep assembly on the 29th for, for homecoming, at 1:30, our seventh graders are going to a field trip on Friday, the 30th, to Mosquito Hill.
Nice.
The eighth graders are going to watch a play on government at the Ashkosh Grand, I've, it's been three years since I've been here, that Grand Theater.
You know what opera's at, in the house?
Yeah, the Opera House, yeah, but they're gonna watch a play, not, not, not opera. Yeah, it's weird, yeah.
Opera of Government? That would be awesome.
So, so is it?
I don't think it's called Hamilton.
And, and then the parent-teacher conferences on October the 19th. And I shared with you explicitly a link to the Bams event calendar, all you need to do, if you use Google, Google Calendar, is just add that to your calendar, and then you can get everything that's happening at Bams.
So what I wanted to show, and Mike's gone very in-depth, but everyone you can see behind you, we were able to call it the Oriole Way Reading, is that what you're gonna get in that, in that document, on a consistent basis, is an updated reflection of the goals and what's going on, to continue to meet those three main goals of our, of our district of increasing literacy, and you know, and then also with the happiness, and also...
Instruction?
Instruction.
Engagement?
Engagement and instruction. So that's, that'll be something that you'll see every month, and they're very similar at all the different grade levels, so, the schools. So just to give you a heads up, you'll see that, they look similar, but you can see the differences, and thank you, Mike, for putting that together. One thing also with Adam, and he'll talk in a minute, is that we are getting very much more focused on being data-driven. Not saying people don't matter, not saying interactions don't matter, they matter more than anything else, but we're gonna find that, we're gonna get hours and days back, and be more efficient and effective, because we're gonna know where it could go, instead of just guessing. And that's why I'm pretty excited about it, so. All right, thanks, Mike. Any of you guys have any questions of Mike, from how the Mike Gonzalez experience has gone so far?
Great job.
Thank you. It's going, it's going great. Thank you for your help.
All right, and then what we'll do is we'll move on to the next level, which would be Samantha. And Samantha's going to discuss, what are you gonna discuss, Samantha?
Homeroom.
Homeroom.
And a homecoming. But, in the home room.
So one of the things that we looked at near the end of the year as an Oriole Way team was, you know, elementary and middle school have common planning time. It's a little easier for them to do the teaching tools over the Oriole Way. And it'd be really hard class to take a high school class and say, okay, we're gonna teach you guys how to walk to the bathroom correctly. It works in middle school, doesn't work in high school. So what we kind of came up with as an Oriole Way team and then shared it with the faculty was, you know what, with our modified block schedule, we see the fifth, sixth hour class every day because our, because of our lunch, just the way your schedule is. And so we asked our staff, would you be willing to give up 10 minutes every Thursday for us to use that time for Oriole Way, for us to use that time for relationship building and to use that time for academic career planning? When the counselors, myself and Adam, had gone to the academic career planning conference last year, intercession, that was our big question is, okay, where are we going to find time in the high school schedule to introduce these academic career planning lessons? And, you know, our counselors, yes, have a role. We need all teachers to take a role, six, 12, in academic career planning. And so home room really kind of fixes a little bit of this. So we started out with home room this year. Every teacher in our building, every aide in our building, I have a cou- couple of guests, home room facilitators. Mr. Broden and Mr. Sadaf have a shared home room. Everyone has between 10 and 12 students. And we take 12 minutes every Thursday. So so far, what we've done, for example, I have a freshman home room. And the first one in September, we kind of went over, hey, what does it mean, again, for be ready, be respectful, be safe? You know, what, how do we do things, you know, what we call the Oriole Way? And it was a review for all of our students who've been there. It was a, a new thing for students who are new to our district. And it was just a good reminder for all of us. The second week, we talked about kind of brainstorming for freshman level. What are academic career planning? Paige, can I put you on the spot to kind of share your, because you, obviously, you're not in a freshman home room, but can you share a little bit what your academic career planning? Like the video that you watched?
Oh, so this past week, we watched a video. It was just more or less like how you're gonna get there. And like, setting aside like your morals, like what's most important to you. Like, like factoring out this I need to carry with me throughout the rest of my life. This can stay behind in high school. Such is how you'll succeed after high school.
So every grade level, thank you. Every grade level has something different. Because obviously, freshmen are different in the conversation than seniors. And what's nice is, and I have shared this document with you, but the counselors kind of started this and then our Oriole Way team added to it. And then we'll continue to add as the year goes on. But we took, you know, every month, so every Thursday, the, the teacher has something planned. So that, you know, there's no stress, per se, for the teachers of like, why don't really feel comfortable talking about academic current planning? Well, you don't have to, you know. For example, on this sheet for freshmen, we reminded out everyone about Oriole Way and leave no trace at lunch. And then, what are ACPs? Brainstorm as a class. ACPs, academic career plans, are new to everyone. Does anyone have any idea what they are, how they can help you? Then we had a six-minute plus video on academic and career planning, just to again, kind of share with them a little bit of, hey, here's what it's about. And then afterwards, we were just briefly able to discuss thoughts. So it's that, you know, brief 12-minute time. The 22nd, we talked about homecoming. And we wanted to make sure, for freshmen especially, do you know what the dress of days are? Do you know how it works for participation? Do you know what Wednesday powder puff is like? And what was interesting, at least for me, is I had two freshmen who, you know, I, I noticed were quiet during home room, but I got emails from them after. Hey, can I come see you? I have a question. Hey, now, if I understand correctly, I can buy a homecoming ticket and I can invite a guest. What do I have to do again? And so I just thought, that's what we want. We want every person in our building to have a go-to person. And that's what we tried to instill from day one is that, you know what, if you, if you've not gotten to that point of any teacher being comfortable yet, we hope you have, but you had your home room teacher that you met the first day. You're gonna see them every Thursday. Any questions you have, you know, what do you need? And then the 29th is going to be, because we, we've got, you know, got a crazy schedule this week, which we went over with everyone last week. But we've got relationship building. So kind, kind of that check-in time, you know, how are things going? We asked a couple of questions that we'll ask this Thursday. What do you wish your teachers knew about you? And what do you wish your peers knew about you that they don't probably know? And they can choose during that activity if they wanna share anything or maybe they won't. And that's totally okay. But every grade level is broken down. You know, so far, I think we're off to a really good start. You know, again, our goal is to provide support for academic career plans, to keep our Oriole Way going so that we're all on the same page, both teachers and students, and then have that relationship with that go-to person, so. It's been really nice for me because there's 12 freshmen that I feel like already have a good connection with. And I've gotten to know little things. I made a conversation with a mom today who said, oh, you're his home room teacher, he's talked about you. I didn't put two and two together, you're the principal. I'm like, that's okay, you know? But I, I know for Adam and Erin, it's nice to have them come in too and they've got a group of freshmen. So it's just providing support. Homecoming, you know, like Paige said, I feel like, you know, student council with the students and Mrs. Colwood, Mrs. Hints, who are doing everything jointly, you know, they're just on track. I, I sent an email after school today that said, hey, guys, are we, where are we at with officials and that? And Amy Coles like, hey, got it, or emailed so-and-so. And they shared a document with me. It's just, it's, it's going really well so far, so. I know I can't predict the homecoming score. I hope that we can have a win on, on Friday. I know Mr. Colby would too. He's, you know, he and Mr. Whitaker are just putting their heart and soul into our kids. And, you know, would like to see that for our kids and, and for them. We have switched our schedule and Bess Yellen was extremely cooperative to help us out with that. So we have a block day Tuesday, which is actually Thursday. And then Wednesday is a normal block day. Thursday, we have our pep assembly scheduled. So more than welcome if you're free from about 12:40 to 2:35. Student council has some awesome games, a couple of new ones and a couple of old ones that we use to...
Old-school appropriate, right?
Yes, they are, yes, they are. But it's a, it's a good time in the gymnasium for, you know, hopefully, everyone to participate. And, and again, that was something we were able to tell the freshmen in home room. Hey, you guys, when you walk in, you know, all of you are sitting here. I know you don't like your colors that were chosen for you.
Good.
Because what is it for freshman, brown and red, red and brown? It's just the way it works. You know, I said, wear red, you know? But they're okay. And, you know, then Friday for our parade. And then our dance is Hawaiian theme on Saturday. We've got quite a few guest forums already filled out. And we had, which always kind of surprises me, Monday, kids don't tend to buy tickets. Oh, we forgot all this. We had a bunch of tickets sold today. So I thought that was a really good sign, so.
And if you haven't, if you, I don't know what schools you went to, Rowan. I think, did you guys have it, the Spirit Olympics? Like, you guys were graduating in the 90s? The 90s? But it's amazing. I've never seen anything like it. It is so cool. And it's, it's, I, I, where I taught before, where I went to school, never saw it before. Last year, so excited that, I think it was the juniors. You guys won everybody, it's pretty fun. Also, make sure that you let everybody know after the parade, Oriole Nation's gonna be doing a cookout out at the Oriole Athletic Complex for food, or to have some food also. There's gonna be a tackle hunger. Do you want to tell them a little bit about that, Paige?
So, um, this girl, her name's Alex. She came from, to me from, she goes to WLA. And she wanted to put together this big, like, I don't know, like, the school's in our area fundraiser. And it's called Tackle School Hunger. And it's a food drive that'll happen on Friday at the game. So every five food items you bring, you get one rack of ticket. So 10 items, you get two tickets.
I'll make you for 20.
But if you choose that, in lieu of the food, you could pay $5, which would equal five food items for that ticket. And then at halftime, there will be a drawing of first, second, and third. First place would win $500, second $300, and third place $200. And this food will help, will go to the families in need around our community here in our Fond du Lac and in Fond du Lac.
Food pantry, so pretty neat. It's happening at every homecoming. And $1,000 is probably from, like, Michael's donated some. I think Mert might have donated some. So some of the bigger companies are donating that $1,000. We'll also have a 50/50 that Oriole Nation, that'll help run out there. And half the money will go to the winner. And the other half will go, we'll probably donate the rest of the second half all to the food pantry. Probably help with that, so.
And, and just, our high school slow is, you know, very much similar to Mike's as far as looking at our level of target, a level of questioning and learning targets. One of the things, we don't have a common assessment like the other buildings do. So ours is based around the ACT that obviously, we want to have our, our learning targets and level of questioning increase those scores in the next three years. So that is our goal. We did have all of our juniors, September 9th, take the practice ACT. Becky and Jean Hints are running ACT prep first quarter. And Doug and Kurt Wismer are running workies prep first quarter. And then those groups will flip-flop so that all of our juniors by semester will have both workies prep and ACT prep. And, you know, I know that the practice ACT, of course, was not well-received by every student. But still, we wanted them to know, like, you know, this is a baseline. And one of the things I tried to share with the kids, because I had the group in the library, was the, the hard part is many of you are not sure what you want to do after high school. And that's okay. But if you graduate from high school and say, you know what, I'm just gonna go into the world of work and, and I'm good. And then three years later, you say, you know what, I changed my mind. I wanna go to MBC. Or no, I really wanna go to a college. Boy, taking one of those placement tests or taking the ACT at that time is a lot more difficult not having three years of math, not having three years of English. And so I tried to remind all of the students, as we did in our other groups, that, you know, the ACT can, it's not just for four-year college. And when we say college, we don't mean four-year college. We mean, you know, what, what class after high school? Whether your employer sends you a class, you're in college. Whether you go to a technical college, you're in college. So I really tried to, to, to get rid of that four-year stigma that, you know, kids who have it and they're kind of like, wow, you know, I don't wanna go to a four-year, I can't get into a four-year. College is much broader than that. So this week, Mr. Wismer and Mr. Fortnight will have ACT practice results to kind of review with their kids. And then our hope is, in the next two weeks, we're gonna establish a spreadsheet, per se, of, you know, here's all the listed juniors, here's how they did in their practice ACT. And, you know, what do we need to work on? The big thing, you know, I've had two students come to my office that, you know, one of them yesterday said to, or Friday said to me, hey, you know what, I actually took the ACT and I scored a 22 on this practice when I scored a 23. You know, and he was a little frustrated. And we looked at, you know, the reading, for example. You know, it's a quick, I mean, you're timed. And not a lot of kids are used to that. And one of the things that he and I talked about was, boy, the first 30 questions, you got one wrong. The next 30 questions, you had multiple wrong. So what do you think was different? And he was like, I looked at the time and saw that I was in trouble. And I'm like, okay, so, you know, right or wrong, that's what we've gotta do, you know, little, little practices. I, I preach to the kids and my staff. I think that the ACT student Twitter site is fantastic. I try to share it with, you know, friends, my nephew, you, you name it. Because I'm like, there's daily things on it about, you know, preparing for life after high school. Hey, take just the English portion, you know, the question of the day, you name it. It's, it's fantastic. So I know Becky and Jean are using, you know, tidbits from that as well. But just to get our, our kids used to, yes, it's one test, but it's a big one. So, you know, they've, they've gotta be more prepared for it.
Even more so than just life. There's always stress, there's some different things. And it's a good, safe way to get people to understand and deal with the results, so. And it's the only thing right now, and, well, we'll talk about report cards probably in October more than anything else, but it's the only thing the high school utilizes to measure achievement. They don't even do growth right now. So it's just a, you know, we, we wanna continue to get better and that'll lead to that state average, but great work, so. And I, like tonight, like I said, it's a lot more than what you're normally gonna get. I just want you to have an idea of what's going on when you see these board reports, what's happening. And know that as we continue to go through. And I think, I think after this survey goes out and we start looking at possible referendum questions, we're gonna get a lot more people interested in our school. So I want you guys to make sure that, I wanna make sure that you have all the information and know not, that'll work. This isn't like it all of a sudden, we're starting to do things. We have these things going and, and we wanna make sure that you have that information. So next, we'll move on to our newest department, the Department of Teaching and Learning. So we got, you know, you can, you know, you gotta go a couple minutes. And then we got Debbie some great programs. You finished off some great programs, so. Alright, Adam, it's on you.
Yeah, I think this, for me, the Broden experiment with this new position's been awesome. And really, yeah, just, you know, speaking to, to the admin team here, just some things that we were able to do starting the summer that we've something to do before as far as getting on the same page, collaborating, and making sure that our goals are aligned to our district goals and, you know, we're working together. And we have consistency has been huge. So I'm really, been impressed with our admin team. The new additions have been great. Carrie Joel and Mike have been doing awesome. Definitely easy to work with, so also great, great hires there. And just really, I think it's a positive thing for our district. And I think we're just scratching the surface of what we're gonna be able to do with this, having this position in place. And then just having some things that we're doing differently within our schools and our meetings for teaching and learning, so. Yeah, basically, do you want me to touch on the report card, Paige?
Yeah, you could just look really quick.
Okay.
If you look up top, one of the things that I can tell you about Adam is he's able to do things that we, I've always wanted to do or that we wanted to get going, we just didn't have enough resources at the time of the day. So if it's calling DPI to, to follow up on a letter that we got, if it's, hey, where do you think this data should fit? If it's, hey, can you go help, how do you develop the goal? Or, hey, are we consistent from friendship to horseman? You don't have to guess anymore. We got a one-stop shop whose job is to be a data czar, to be a consistency czar. And really, I think he's one of the people, this position will give us more efficiencies and effectiveness, I think, than we could ever have dreamed of, so. It's like having a, it's like having a driver hired. You know, if I can look at you like a chauffeur. It's something we never had before. Now that we have it, we can focus on our job and doing what we do more because you're gonna help us drive.
And this is probably new for some of you. This, this school report card that the DPI, so the state puts out, they did not put it out last year just because of some of the uncertainties with state assessments. So they didn't really feel comfortable having the right assessments in place to put out a school report card. So for new board members, if you're thinking, oh, we didn't go through this last year, talk about this, it's because it wasn't out last year. But starting with the 2011, 12 school year, that was the first year the report cards came out. So this will be our fourth school report card that we will get. We will get a district score. And then each of our buildings besides ELC will be scored. ELC's can wrap into what FLC does, but there's not a building score for ELC, so.
And it's only third through fifth, or third through 12th grade?
So definitely ELC impacts those grades, but just kind of down the road, not with any state assessments at that moment. So, so those of you that have seen the report card before, you might hear people talk about the changes. So I just want to highlight quickly just a few of the changes you'll see. Right where that first arrow is and where Aaron is, one of the big things the state want to do is instead just having that number, which is out of 100, they felt that they wanted to have five stars on there. And schools would get either one to five stars based on that overall score.
So this would be like a holiday inn, quite an American club, it's a three-star thing. It's, it's one of the things from the, that the Republican caucus really wanted to drive home that we somehow labeled public schools. And this was their compromise. Still has meets expectations, the lesson colors, but now we just have the whole general thing kicking.
So nothing changed with the scores as far as meets expectation? Those numbers still are the same as they have been in past years, just the stars are added. How that number score is calculated, calculated, excuse me, is over to the right. So there's four.
These aren't percentages, it's not out of 100, like a 70's, a C, a 60's, a D. It's nothing like that. So all, these are totally different.
They put it out of 100 just to make it cleaner, but yeah, it's not a, if you're 70%, doesn't mean you're a C school or, or whatnot. It's just that's, that's your number. So those four pieces there, those four headings, student achievement, student growth, closing gaps and on track, those are the four areas that they look at. And when those are calculated out of 100, those scores go into that overall score out of 100. The one change that really impacts our district and other districts that have a high poverty rate is that those top two scores in the past have been weighted each equally at 25%. So they looked at 25% for student achievement, 25% of your overall score is going to be student growth.
25 gaps, 25 here.
So that would make up your 100% for your, for your 100 for that school score. What they did this year to kind of level the playing field a little bit is they said, okay, if you are a district that has high poverty, we're going to look at that student growth and that's going to carry more weight. So a district like ours, and I'll just throw out the number 50%, if we would have 50% poverty rate or free reduced lunch, then they would look at, instead of that being a 25-25 split, it would probably be more like a 37% 12% split. So that student growth is going to have more impact when it comes to that overall score. So again, districts like ours, that if we're able to show, show great growth and our achievement maybe isn't where we need it to be, it's still going to be a positive thing because that growth is, is obviously a good thing for students that, any students, but students that come to us behind a little bit, so. And basically, you know, and on the flip side too, just you guys are aware, schools that, you know, it kind of goes 35% would be that 50/50 split. And then if you go below 35%, so say you're a district that has 10% poverty, they're going to put more emphasis on the achievements. It might be a 38% for achievement and 12% for student growth.
And that's where the controversy is going to come. You're going to find some suburban Milwaukee school districts, some other ones where they have very little poverty. Their goal scores aren't that good because the students that are struggling, they don't really show much growth. And they're not going to be as, they're not going to show up as well because it's not. So there, that's where some of the problem. I would say the problem is where some of the controversy is going to be. How could we go from a significantly exceeds expectations now just meeting expectations? So that's, that's, I think, where we're going to see a lot of the conversations. These are embargoed until, and we're, we're getting ours out this week. We don't, we can't share them per se until after the 31st of October. And they're trying to get that pushed back till after the election. But the 31st of October is when these are unembargoed and they'll come out. So I'll share more information. You're going to receive these embargoed report cards in the next two weeks that I will send to you. That you will not give to anybody else, but you can look at them. And then what we'll do is we'll have a conversation and we'll write some summaries. One of, one of the differences too is that in the high school, there's the ACT and that's for juniors, there is no growth. So achievement is 50% of your score regardless. And that's something Adam had called today. So that's something that we're going to have to also look at consideration. But what I love that Samantha team's already done is they're already focusing on, how can we just get, how can we focus on really good instruction literacy so our kids can excel and get even better at the ACT? Not that it's an all be all, but we know that it's an important, it's an important opportunity. And it's something that gets reported, so.
And the last thing too, just when you look at the school report card, it's just based on those state assessments. So, you know, we look at in our district that balance assessments, we have local assessments along with our states and then assessments within the classroom. But this is just putting out achievement based on that state assessment, which is one time a year. So just one snapshot from that, that day or that series of days.
And once, another thing that to kind of keep your eyes open, ESSA, the reauthorization of No Child Left Behind, allows for one more that we have to put on here. And currently, right now, the superintendents, and I know a lot of people are pushing for career and college readiness. So if you look at how career ready our kids are and look at that, we're going to start doing more with that. You know, if you have a career, a pathway to pick, what's your attendance rate? You know, what's your, are you participating in actual curriculums, those types of things? So that could be another thing that, hey, now we can start to really get measured and get credit for all the certificates that Jill Lewinsky and Mike McDowell and Kurt Wismer and Doug Forsyth are getting students so they can be prepared to go into the world of work and be more successful when they go post-secondary education. So this is this year, it's going to get even, it's going to get a little bit different as we move forward, but it's a good start. But thank you very much, Adam, for all that you've done. And really interesting, if anybody'd ever want to walk around someday, it's pretty cool to talk to Adam and find out what he's seen at all different levels based on instruction and learning. So thank you.
I just have one question. And it's always kind of, you know, not that I have an agenda, but I always ask about our gifted students. What do we have in place? So I, I don't know if it's 2% of our population, if it's whatever it is. But do we have a plan in place for gifted students so they're not bored, that they're challenged? And, you know, not just our special needs kids? Because we are fantastic at that. But what do we have for?
Can I address this first and then I'll pass it off to you?
Sure.
All right. Really interesting, data shows, and now wrap your head around this because it's pretty profound. Data shows that a student that's of poverty qualifies for free and reduced lunch. That's in a school that doesn't have a concentration of poverty, that's low poverty, achieves at this level, okay? A student not of poverty, but is in a school, district or school where there is a concentration of poverty or people qualify for free and reduced lunch, actually achieves at a lower level than that student in poverty. Now, I saw that, and this is why the title wanted a concentration of poverty and what it does. What's happened is, and you're right on the nose with this, and this is something we're going to address, I'll throw it back to Adam and he'll talk about some conversations he's having, is that when you ask a teacher to individualize education, it's really hard to do. But we need to individualize education because in the past, what we would do is when we'd say, let's teach the kids, it'd be this, the zone of products, well, let's teach the average. And the average ability, because of resources coming up of students that maybe don't have as many resources, is at a different level than, than somewhere else. So we have actually seen that even students not of poverty are not achieving as well as their counterparts amongst the state. And I think that has something to do with it, that we aren't differentiating instruction as well. Understanding that, we have technology now, we're utilizing time, Kerry, Joel, just small things. We're the beginning to end of school, how we have more time for instruction. How we're looking at organizing our day, a modified block schedule, how we're doing different things in that fashion. That's going to help. But also, what you're saying also is something that's on our radar.
And, and great question, if you are talking to the district GT coordinator. So I just settled back the other day. And this is something we've been working on since the summer actually, so I'm glad you brought that up. And, you know, basically, again, every district should have a gifted and talented coordinator. So that is myself, so if you hear from parents, they have questions, they can come and talk with me. Every district should have a plan in place. Our plan right now, I haven't really found it on paper, but our plan is, you know, we will ban skip if, if we see that's, there's a need to do that, we'll look to differentiate within the classroom. But, you know, kind of talking and thinking about it, I don't think that's a good enough plan. So we can look at some other, other options and see how other districts do things and then figure out what's best for our students. But Amy Mockert, one of the teachers at Friendship, her and I have been talking about it. And actually, we just signed up to attend the gifted and talented network meetings at CSU 6. So this is kind of our next couple of months from kind of learning, networking, talking to people and just kind of trying to develop our plan. We've kind of hatched out a couple of things we'd like to do and just kind of learn a little bit more and see where that leads. But yeah, like Aaron said, I think we, you know, when you look at all students, we want those students that are achieving at a high level. They deserve to grow and, and gain knowledge too. So we don't, you know, part of that RTI framework is, every student has that right to, to make those gains. And we can intervene at that high level as well as at the low level. So that's what we're looking to do.
Can I jump in and add something that we've talked about? So, and kind of going off of the email that you and I had, we're looking at Friendship. We're, we're looking at rolling in more RTI. Where in the past, we've addressed through our power-up blocks, our resources have typically gone to our students that have been what we would call RAD-RAD, they're, they're low in multiple measures. And that's really where a lot of that focus has gone. And one of the things that I heard loud and clear, literally, at the first board meeting at this ad, was that there needs to be more services for kids on the other end of the spectrum. And again, true RTIs, you've got your population of students that are struggling and you have your population of students that are needing to be challenged. Those are both opposite ends, but they're still RTIs that I've mentioned. So through our process, when we do our regrouping, we do three rounds of power-up throughout the year. And one of the things that we're doing is we're doing a blind data review where we're looking at student data, but we're hiding their names and their teachers so that we don't know who it is that we're looking at. We're strictly looking at data. And we've talked about looking at each grade level, where do we get the most bang for our buck? Where can we make that greatest impact? Because our building SLO is going to be focused not only on the growth as it has been in the past, but also on that achievement. Because those are the two pieces for us that we know we can make a difference in. So in looking at that, we're not necessarily saying this year, if they're low achievers, that's where our resources are going. Because we're hearing, and Adam and I have talked with, with each other about this and with our team, we also want to be able to put some resources together towards the other end. So very much something that's being addressed at Friendship.
So maybe get a future agenda item maybe towards the end of the year, let's be, get some learning and have some conversations that we like. We look for some, kind of a draft of a plan for next year and moving forward, so.
Excellent. And last, but, Steve, why we're doing that, look, can we make sure we don't forget about that individualized stuff? That does go on in the classroom, I think that's your best way of handling this day-to-day. You know, the more intelligent people see things maybe another level. And we, we back off a level for some of this learning disabled kids. So why can't that individual teacher also supplement at another level, the concept that's being taught? And, you know, I know it's a lot of work and it's a long day, but. One of the things that's really addressing that is level of questioning. You can address one topic with different levels of depth of questioning. And one of the things, what was this, Richard Cash, gentleman from Minnesota, when we went to the first academy, talked about that. We're different, a different way of looking at it, we might be talking about ancient Greece. And it might be one question that says, you know, name the different elements of different cities, states of ancient Greece and, and how they were different. The other one might be, a different level might be, hey, name the different elements of, or different cities, states of ancient Greece and why did Sparta find success in military but Athens didn't? And where did Athens? And then it might be, and then the next level would be, explain the major cities, states of ancient Greece and how do they correlate to a current country or a current state? So you start looking at differentiating with the kids in the class. So you're still covering the same subject matter, but you're doing it a different way. Then you make those students who, not to make gifted and talented harder, just challenge more. And that's what we used to always do is when somebody was gifted or somebody was understanding that, we'd make them do more. But that's kind of a change. So we're actually getting the technology, one of our main goals is level of questioning. And that's something we add with making sure that we have all of our, our objectives on the board, is our level of questioning. And that's exactly how we can differentiate with keeping those kids together and still having that, you know, same-age peer relationship and having those kids stretch because they hear those conversations at a level maybe they're not used to, which they may want to stretch themselves to.
And just to comment too, Steve, that's a great point. That is part of our thought process right now, is that part of it is train the adults that, hey, what do you do in your classroom when you have, you know, a student that you know, it doesn't need to do more, but needs to go to a deeper level? So, because it's, you know, again, there's a couple of different miles out there for a gifted and talented program. There is like pulling a kid out. But before we would do that, we want to look and be more personal, what we're doing in the classroom first, so.
Good, thank you. And then, last but not least, Debbie, if you want to talk about some of your cool new programs over at FLC?
And, and thanks. First of all, and thank you to Mike for the template. I stuck our little cute junior Oriole Academy little guy that Darrell Rock had created on, on the top of ours just because we represent the three, four, or five-year-olds. And you're going to notice that on my board report, I'm going to talk a lot more about special ed, ELL and the other areas. In my newsletter, I'll stick to ELC. Just because, to inform you both ways, to put all of the special ed and ELL on the ELC newsletter would make sense. So going there, I'm going to talk about two things tonight. And the first one of these is the self-regulation rooms that we have going. We have one up and running at FLC manned throughout the day by a teacher and an assistant. And then we have one also at BAMs. And we have a room at the high school as well, calming room. At the high school as well. The idea of a self-regulation room, and I kind of defined it, is that with all the issues, anxiety, mental health that are pervasive, not just in one school, but throughout today, kids get anxious. All of us get anxious about something. And how we want to relax and feel comfortable to be able to go back and get ready to learn is different. So what they do is students, after they've had some instruction, volunteer, literally, to come down for a short break. And it may be three or four minutes. And it might be a movement break, it might be a breathing one, it might be music. It might be rolling up tight in a sleeping bag and having squishing going on, whatever relaxes you. And what relaxes Mike and what relaxes Debbie and what relaxes Samantha is all different. That's why I gave you Go Noodle, Fear of the Dark, some of the anxiety and the separation ideas as some of the strategies that we teach the kids and so that you could go in there and see. Because it has to be individualized for whatever they're coming down. Maybe they're nervous about a test, maybe they're nervous about lunch, maybe they're nervous because Dad's not going to pick them up, somebody else's tonight. Whatever they're upset about, they can come down there, take a relaxing break for a couple of minutes and go back to the classroom. We are taking data right now on how many are using it. We've had up to 16 or 17, which is too many in one room at one time. It's located on the northeast end of the building. It used to be Tiffany's set for, for last year.
Just a couple doors off from the house.
And, and if you saw it, you would see things like fidgets, you'd see different textures, you'd see bean bags, you'd see headphones with music, you'd see a movement app, you'd see some things on breathing. You'd see a whole lot of things in there. You'd see something where they could go and crawl into a box. I mean, some people relax very, very differently. And for a couple of minutes, we have found that's a lot better than acting out, than blowing up, than needing to be secluded or restrained, you know, using some of those. So we have that going on. The one over at BAMs has an exercise bike, rocking chairs, carpets, sleeping bag, different books, headphones, music, different things that they can relax. The calming room painted by the high schoolers last year, real subtle colors, very comfortable, sayings, lowered light, you know, not these fluorescent ones, all those kinds of things for students to go in there. And so that's the idea of the self-regulation room. We are collecting data on how many people are using it. For the most part, they are special needs student. For the most part, we have a couple, three or four that are accessing it, not real regularly. One of them has only been in there once or twice that isn't. But we have four that are accessing it who are not special needs students over at FLC. But I just thought maybe giving you an idea of what they're like, what the strategies are that are there. And you can click on any of the links there, whether it's the breathing one. And it's not just the conscious discipline star and breathe, it's just different things at different age levels to teach you to breathe and, and to relax differently. The second kind of program I wanted to talk about tonight, and I call them integrated programs. For a long, many years, our district has been known for their inclusive philosophies when it comes to special education. And we have all found that not always is the general education classroom the least restrictive environment for all of our kids. We know that because we have some students at Elmwood and Abity. We also know that students that I'm talking about today are not in the regular curriculum. They are following what we call the essential elements, which if you look at the Common Core, there are five precursor steps all the way down to two months of age and, and developmentally all the way up then. And we have about nine students over at Friendship and about four here at BAMs that are in those programs. They will not be taking the forward exam to be on that report card. They'll be taking the dynamic learning maps, which is an alternate test. They go in, and I call it integrated because when we integrate kids, just because they're not reading at one level doesn't mean that they, if they're in eighth grade or they go to a fourth grade, they're going to be integrated. We integrate kids with same-age peers for socialization, for what they can handle. Are they in there all day long? No, of course not. They've been integrated previously in teen taught rooms. And now we're finding that with the number of them that we have, many returning from Fond du Lac and a couple transferring and moving back to us, that this year, we have instruction needed both in ELA and math areas for several of these students in the room. And it doesn't look like the regular educational instruction. It's going to be at a level that's much different. We have hired an LPNA, her name is Julie Shaver. We couldn't service some of these students because we didn't have medical services. We have students with genetic disorders or missing chromosomes. And it's, for those reasons, development has been different. Their journey of learning is completely different than others. We have now the ability to do, Jean, to be in here, to do those things five days a week. And we don't have to pay to send them to Fond du Lac or somewhere else. But those programs are existing right now in two of the buildings. Last year, you heard me talk about PODS, that pragmatic organizer display where the visuals were there and we flipped it, that big PVC thing. We actually have groups of kids doing that. I think I have 12 being made right now that I know of for students that are either a smaller version so they can carry them. But many of these students are not verbal in the sense that they can maybe understand, but they can't vocalize. So they use visuals and this helps them facilitate oral language. And so we have POD groups going on in both of these buildings throughout that time. Something else that you're going to see that we haven't done for many years before is we have else that you're going to see that we haven't done for many years before is we have Braille being taught. And if you have never seen somebody learn Braille, it is, it's very amazing. It's, it's just very, very fun. It's good for the classroom to see those people done and, you know, learning. And if you haven't seen that before, that's just a new kind of learning that's going on here. So just wanted to share some things like that.
Who teaches that, somebody?
We have vision people that we hired from CISA to do the actual, you know, instruction. Tammy Keller is our certified vision person as an aide who has taken both contracted and uncontracted Braille. And so you start with the the six dots of Braille. They learn the upper and lowercase. They're learning things like what money feels like and how you tell dollar bills from one another and coins from one another. They start with high interest words to keep the interest up for learning Braille. So one of my little guy's friends, first words that he wanted to learn was was how to Braille pizza, the word pizza. So I thought that was kind of fun. Yeah. So it's not just always, you know, is it the to make sentences, but it's high interest things too. And and it's really neat for the general ed students to see that going on. By the end of the year, we'll have Braille words around the room that many students will be able to see. And it's, it's just different. So and it's really, it's kind of fun.
I want to say Debbie, I think when we look at inclusion, not only are we doing things for those kids who are on a different path on their learning journey, be it in a wheelchair, be it maybe being horizontal because they can't be vertical for many hours in the day. But it's so good for our students too to learn about tolerance and learn about differences of students who don't have these disabilities. So I really love having all of our kids back here. Now we serve every type of kid possible. So it's really cool. Thank you guys very much. I know that this was a little bit long tonight. It won't be as long normally, but I just wanted you guys getting to understand what's going on. And please read those updates and come with questions and get in those buildings. So thank you guys very much. Great stuff.
Do we have any visually impaired students?
Yes, we do. We have two. And we have every disability right now, but traumatic brain injury. We have two hearing impaired students with doing some signing and and doing things that way. They have enough speech that they'll be able to learn some speech so they won't only have to sign.
Rock and roll. That's all I have, sir.
All right. That was awesome.
And please, if you ever have some anxiety about what's going, ask them because there's so much more that we're doing that we're not telling you just because there's not enough time in the day. So if anybody ever questions or wants to, just ask and you can find the answer. If we're not doing it, we're going to get better at doing it if it's worthwhile.
All right, very good. Next on the agenda, item K, new business. Item number one, discuss and consider establishing the freshman activity account for the class of 2016.
Is what it is. They're coming in, they're going to get some coin and they're going to play the footage.
So we do this every year for the incoming freshmen. So I will entertain a motion from someone on the board to establish that account.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right. It's moved and seconded. Seconded to establish the activity account. Any questions? Discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Will.
Yes.
Hack.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Goldavsky.
Yes.
Motion carries. I remember to discuss and consider resignation of Kim Orlebeck from the varsity softball coach.
Hi, Kim's done a great job. She was the softball coach for a while, took a couple of years off, came back. She just has, I think, her life journeys changed and she's done that opportunity. Mike has already been posted. We're getting some people to apply. So and I'm just very thankful that she let us know this early in the year and said later on.
All right. I entertain a motion to accept the resignation of Kim. So.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Streeter.
Yes.
Goldavsky, yes. Hack.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Chisholm. Yes. Motion carries. Item number three, discuss and consider contract for Royal Smith, math educator for Bessie Allen Middle School.
Ironically, he's here today. This is his first day, so it's great to have him here. And this is Matt's first day of being on the train because his wife just had a baby, Elizabeth, or no, Olivia. And this was the first day that Samantha was finally going to get some help with the dean of students at the high school, but isn't. But on a basic district wise, we're saving money because we don't have to get a substitute. So it's kind of all working out. Royal is so excited to be here and we're happy to have.
All right. Very good. Then I'll look for a recommendation to accept the contract.
So.
I'll second that.
All right.
Okay. So who is it seconded by?
Any other questions or discussion? If not, roll call vote, please.
Hack.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Goldavsky.
No.
Streeter.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item four, discuss and consider extra duty contracts for Kelly Maurer for mentor, Ramsey Imble for sophomore class advisor.
No others as of yet. I didn't, I just didn't. I think it's my catch all in now because things have changed so much. So just in case somebody resigned and we hired somebody, I just thought I'd put it in my own head. I'm in up Kelly will do a great job with Amy Ramsey. I know that I have a sophomore living in my house that's jacked up that that's one of her class advisors now and she'll do a great job.
All right. I looked for court action then for approval for Kelly Maurer and for Ramsey Imble.
Make that motion.
Again.
All right. Moved and seconded to accept the recommendation. Any questions or discussion? There you go. Roll call vote, please.
Streeter.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Chisholm.
Yes.
Goldavsky.
Yes.
Hack.
Yes.
All right. Item number five, discuss and consider the appointment of Jill, Kim, Jenny, Linda, Elizabeth, Gwen, Colleen, Kathy, and special education educators as representatives. Can I just add?
We'll get Matt next time. We could, I didn't have him listed here, so I'll put him next time. We can, we'll get him on there.
All right. So this is annual board action?
Yeah. And what this is, is that we will always try to have administrators there. Big thing with LEAs is those that are representing the district and representing the process. For instance, if there's anything that has extra aid time, what tests they're going to be taking, as Debbie had talked about earlier, are they going to take the dynamic learning maps as an alternative test because of the curriculum? These are all conversations that happen during the IEP process. There's always one person who represents the the district and to make sure that things are done right for that child and with the district because there's sometimes financial and resource impacts and we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. We will 90% of the time have one of these people here or they'll come to me before they'll do any of these. But if at any time, we just want to have that flexibility because we do have over 220 IEPs out there and it gets, it gets difficult.
So just so I have this, I mean, so this does not list, I mean, my little thing here does not list all the names. So.
So you could just put, put, make a move to recommend the name. Do you know what? Let's add Matt Bertram then.
Well, I was just going to say so.
Let's just go off, if we put Matt Bertram on there, then what we'll do is just reference the minutes. And so we're approving this list here, special education educators and Matt Bertram. And do that if, and then, and then what we'll do is just reference this and I'll, Darcy, put that in the minutes.
All right. So I look to the board then for action to approve those nine educators to the LEAs. So I'll second that.
Well, now you're specifying nine, but then it also is a special education educator. So is that any special education license teacher? So it's much more than nine.
Correct. So I would say just reference the names listed and then I can come up with a list of all the special education educators and give them their name.
Well, just so the motion's clear is I'll be my point, I guess.
Identified, identified staff. Just identified staff. Understanding it's going to be us for the most part anyways. Just gives us flexibility.
And excepting over to the.
And just to give you a heads up, if I'm a, if I'm a special educator and I have an IEP and I'm the case worker on there, or if I'm doctor, or if I'm Liz Leidler, or if I'm Kathy Hayes, I can't be the LEA if I'm part of the IEP team. So that's where things get a little bit difficult because we have a lot of people that are part of that IEP team that can't be the LEA. So that's why this is kind of important because sometimes we get stressed if we got three roles going on. But understand that there is checks and balances and rules that don't allow some other person to serve in two capacities during that process.
All right. So just to be clear then, the the motion is to appoint the recommended staff and special education educators as representatives.
That's nice.
All right. Any other questions for discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Goldavsky, yes. Chisholm.
Yes.
Hack.
Yes.
Streeter.
Yes.
Will.
Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number six, discuss and consider preliminary budget for the 1617 school year.
This is some exciting stuff. And what we're going to be able to do and Maria, I know that you love being brief. And if you get through this, you guys have this data and information. Overall, awesome. I mean, this is, I mean, we're looking at $140,000 deficit, which really, and that takes out, remember when I came with the idea of the dean of students extra math? And I said, here are some things that we can do in order to get there. All those are, are, we were not even assuming those things. So that's still 100% HRA is counted. We're, we're looking at $100,000 from 73 to pay OPEB. We're looking at, all that stuff is back in.
Health insurance.
Health insurance is still at 10% instead of five. So this is, we're doing some amazing things and you'll see why. So I'm going to turn it over to Maria. Maria, feel that you can be as brief or as quick as you can. Bottom line is you want to get bored in this. We are doing fiscally very well and it's not because of just because, it's because of a lot of hard work and foresight that the board has had that has allowed us to move forward and do things. So thank you.
And we'll talk more in detail in about three weeks at the annual meeting. So this is just an overview. This segment kind of takes the place of our budget meeting that we typically have before the board meeting. So briefly, 2015-16 was very, very good. We're pretty much audited now. I'm just waiting for the auditors to submit the financial statements to DPI. But the final, the final result was a deficit of 66, a little over 66,000. It really didn't change our fund balance. It would change, it went down less than 1%. So we're still looking really good in our fund balance.
We actually would have had a surplus of over $100,000 if we would have followed the revenue that we were going to put into the budget.
Yeah, that Fund 73 transfer, we didn't do. We left it in Fund 73 to pay future post employment benefits. So yes, Erin, that we would have had $40,000 surplus. But I'll let you look over, you've got that list of just some of the highlights of 2015-16. So I'll let you, if you have any questions, feel free to call me, email me, stop in. I welcome any questions that you have on 1516. But obviously, we need 1516 to be able to project 1617. So I'll focus a little bit more on that. As Erin said, we are looking at right now about $142,000 deficit, but we're still waiting for our final equalized aid number. We don't know what the voucher student situation is yet. DPI actually calculates that and they will calculate the effect, what effect that has on our revenue limit. And then the health insurance renewals. Those three are are pretty big numbers. And we'll have the final equalized aid, numbers one and two, final equalized aid and the voucher students on October 15. So I'll turn around, I'll get that in our revenue limit worksheet and then we'll report, I'll report on the, what, 17th, 18th? I think the 15th is on a Saturday, so I may get it on the 14th.
And we'll wait till Monday. You don't have to come in on Saturday.
Okay. All right. I'll be looking though. So some of the highlights, some of the things that are included in the 1617 budget or that we are proposing be included in the 1617 budget, the staff wage increases and really the 2.6% that I have listed there, that is really the teachers. They make up the the bulk of our wages. So I put in the 2.6%. It's probably a little bit higher than that because most of the support staff got at least 3%, maybe a little bit more. We've already talked about, you're sitting in some of the remodel for the, because of the Student Services Center being moved here. And I don't know if you've seen the new center. It's, it's really pretty cool. And then behind here is a meeting room. So that's, that was built into the budget. Our director of teaching and learning was built into the budget. Our high school dean of students, who is Matt Bertram, he is in addition to the budget. In order to support more, more kids means more of everything in every office. So we've increased what we had in Bessie Allen. We just, we had a full-time and a part-time secretary in there. We've now increased that part-time position to full-time and she will be part-time Bessie Allen and part-time Student Services, supporting both. We haven't quite figured out the logistics of that. I think for the most part, she's over at Bessie Allen right now until we figure out, you know, how she's going to get trained in all of these different areas, but.
And she is Caleb Dieter.
Yes. So that's an increase to the budget. We've also increased some teaching time for our metals teacher, Tom Kaiser, and we've added some math. Our math numbers were getting pretty high, so we needed to add a little bit of math support there. Our technology education, we've invested some new hardware and software in there. Gosh, how many computers and a bunch of computers in there and software?
Like less than 70, but more than 30. Right around 60 computers and a whole bunch of others. The software, the, what is Acrobat, Adobe, Premiere, Photoshop, all those things.
Yeah. And we did that through a lease. So it's a five-year lease. So the cost is spread out over the five years. Probably the most exciting news I have for you are our enrollment changes. On, on the third Friday, all of our secretaries compiled the, the enrollment on that day and turned around and got it back to Darcy on that Tuesday. So the results were pretty, pretty cool. Our open enrollment, we had 265 open enrolling in and 195 open enrolling out for a net of 70 students, open enrolling in over out. We had 14 resident student decrease. So the net of that is 56 students that we gained this year. So that's, that's really cool. And we have some visuals for you showing a really good trend.
Just to give you a heads up on those 14, the belief of why we went down FT that is that we, we have more people coming in, but I can think of a handful of families that moved to Fond du Lac or Oshkosh and enrolled and enrolling their kids. They were residents here last year and now they live in a surrounding district. So their kids are still going here. It's just they don't live there anymore.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
I kind of quizzed Darcy on that because she gets all of those forms. And I said, what, what this, this is just, I don't like seeing that little dip in that graph. What's going on? And she, she confirmed that, that she sees a lot of that now, that people are moving out of North Fond du Lac into a surrounding neighborhood or surrounding district, but they want to keep their kids here. So.
And really, I think one of the exciting parts, if you look at the bold part here, if we were as the district the size of Fond du Lac, over the past five years, we would have grown 980 students.
Percentage wise, yeah.
That puts things in a little perspective.
Yep. And even though we had a little bit of a dip in our, in our resident students, we are still, we're still gaining revenue limit because of that three-year rolling average. So we still got a little bit more revenue limit this year. What else do we have?
And this reflects that from Maria too.
Yeah. So with those numbers, our, we're projecting our open enrollment net revenue to be $550,000, a little bit over that, a little bit over half a million. So that's pretty cool. Let's see. Oh, we touched a little bit on. Oh, we touched a little bit on the tax levy and how we've been trying to maintain that tax levy. If we didn't over levy, our levy would drop to $8.30 odd cents. So we're maintaining that, we're prepaying the debt. We are kind of positioning ourselves if we do go to referendum, that it wouldn't be such a, such an adjustment then. So that would be, this year alone would be a $641,000 prepayment in debt.
And you can see here, this is our trend. You can see that really since like 19 or 2010, it's been a pretty stagnant levy rate, so that's, it's pretty exciting. Doing some good stuff. And a lot of it has to do with what aid we get. We've learned how to handle our money really well and invest in certain ways so we can always maximize how much aid we get.
And I work really closely with Mike Clark at Baird. He's one of the directors over at Baird and, you know, just to make sure our thought processes is, it makes sense. And he said, we are doing, we just talked with him, I think on Friday. We had a conference call and he said, you're doing exactly what you need to do. So he was pretty excited by, by these numbers as well.
And one thing to, you know, as this district of choice, if you check out this graph up here, from 2006 and '07, when we had a negative of 35 students open enroll out and in, we were losing $238,000 a year. This year, we have a net of 70 and our revenue from those students coming in is over half a million dollars. So you're looking at changing over eight, almost $800,000 since 2007 and how open enrollment has positively impacted us.
And open enrollment was closed to special aid, so that open enroll increase are not special aid.
Yeah, that's just.
And closed to third grade and closed to elementary.
Yeah.
Just something to note.
Thank you.
We don't, we don't know, we don't know what the, that ceiling would have been had we not closed it, but it would have been a lot higher. And then my last bullet point, oh, two more bullet points. Our E3 Academy last year did very well. I can't even remember how many kids we had in there, but it's growing. We had a $75,000 grant last year. This year, it was up to $200,000.
Hundred thousand.
No, one.
One hundred thousand.
$100,000.
He said two.
No, up to, up to all.
I'm sorry. I was like, what? No, I'm sorry.
There was, there was.
Two, 100.
I don't know who near or split somewhere else.
So yeah, we look forward to some more, some good things from the E3 Academy again this year. And then my final bullet point was, we had no increase in our dental insurance renewal rates. Those renewed in January. We're still waiting for the health renewal rates. I actually got an email today from one of our consultants and she said, I'm, I'm working on it as hard as I can. She's hoping this week she will have a pretty good idea of what our renewal will be.
And they're kind of giving you an idea. We have 10% built into the budget, but for every percent save, it's $10,000. So far, if our renewal would be at 7%, that'd be $30,000 off of what we're projecting deficit was. And the final thing I'd like to add, if you look up here, fund balance history, where you can see 2016, '17, that's 20.6%. Understanding also that we have a decrease of what our local levy is by seven, almost 8%. So that's where sometimes that hits it too. It's not that we have less money, we have less that we can raise in order to have a fund balance. So it, there's different things that hit it, but we're still in very, very good shape.
Yep. So that's.
Any questions? So if, with the prepayment or the over levying to be the prepayment, if there's no referendum or if a referendum fails, we're simply ending our obligation earlier then?
Yep.
And is that, what other advantages are there to that, other than it just ends earlier? The tax rate goes down that particular year?
Good.
Yes.
2018?
Yep. And we have to use all that prepayment on our final debt payment, so that will get used. It's not like we'll put it into a fund balance or anything. It has to be used for that.
And then, well, it goes to communication, trust in what we're doing. I mean, I can definitely see, and then we go out there, somebody says, so you're saying I could pay $90 less a year on my taxes if I, if you don't do this? Yes. But then what services, how does that work? What goes on? You know, it's all part of what we're doing as a business. So those are questions and we're going to have, and that's why this information after the survey, whatever question, whatever we come out of that with how we're going to accelerate our facilities plan is going to be huge. And then all of that information, I can, what I can guarantee you is, I want to be as transparent and open and upfront as we possibly can about our financials because it is, it's huge. And the reality of it is, if we don't do anything, if we don't move forward and accelerate our, our building plan and our levy drops that much and we see these needs continue to go, then we can look at doing something later on, but 100% right. Or just banking on financially that consistency because we know we have.
And then one of the slides as well that you have is this flow chart that we've kind of adopted. I think this is the second year we've started using this. But at the top of that flow chart, that shows where, where we're projecting right now, that $142,000, it's kind of off-center to the left, meaning it's a negative. And then on both sides of that line, I've kind of listed what, what's going to shift that more towards center. So some of the increased costs that we might incur, some of the decreased revenues that would shifted into more of a negative. And then on the flip side, some increased revenues that we might, might experience as well as some decreased costs.
And what we'll show you after the adoption of the budget, as we go on, as we see these variables hit, we'll update this chart so you can see.
Absolutely. Any questions so far? Okay. I think this is the fastest if you've ever done this. And then finally, it's, those are the budget adoption. Yep. There you go. That's the, the actual budget adoption. There's some history there from 2013, '14 on. So it kinds, it kind of gives you a snapshot of what's happened each year and how each line item has changed. But on the second page, it's going to show our total expenditures for Fund 10 at $15,396,506. And, and then the deficit right below that. And then it just goes fund by fund. So you can take a look at debt service, which is 3839. That's what we just talked about.
Those are exciting ones.
Our, our capital projects funds is what we started just last year. That's where we put 500, oh, wait. Sorry. 46 is not in there. But we did put, we paid off that, the field.
Oriole Flock conflict.
Yes. The Oriole Flock conflict. So now that's at zero. Fund 46, which is not in there, that's where we put $500 in and started that clock rolling on it. That's also called a capital projects fund. So. And then food service. And I added employee benefit trust, Fund 73, to kind of show you what's going on there. And community service fund, which I'm, I'm increasing to $98,000 from $86,000. We've seen some need in our middle school programs, especially our middle school sports, especially in transportation and in our workers and, and officials. So I'm just going, I, we're not trying to make any money in community service. We are just trying to break even, basically. So if we increase that from $86,000 to $98,000, then we would break even.
I thought Fund 80 was capped and we weren't allowed to.
It was.
Yeah. It's not anymore.
Because they realized that wasn't, that everybody wasn't misusing it. So they allowed, as long as you used it within these parameters, we're not going to just think everybody cheats. This is really what it came down to. So they, they used enough and said, use these parameters and we'll actually check you. And that audit, there's, there's no way that we would put anything in there to audit. That's one of the things that they very much checked that that's illegal.
Yes. They do a separate little audit just on Fund 80. Last year it was very extensive. This year it was, you know, it was less. I mean, they still look at it, but it's definitely not on the radar like it was.
One final thing, depending on what the voucher levy is, since we're over levying with, in order to pay off our debt, what Maria and I will work on is a recommendation that even though it could be, last year was 23,000-ish, 22, something for, for the voucher that we have before.
Oh, yes.
We can decrease what we're going to be paying forward so that we could keep that 964.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. So that, even when we get that, we have a lot, we have enough legal room so that that still won't increase our levy. Although it'd be a nice statement to show, but that, I don't think would be financially.
Yeah, we've got.
We're not going to recommend to do that. So regardless of what happens, we have room that our levy can stay the same even if we have increased costs in different areas. Nice job, Maria.
Thanks.
Other questions or comments, Mr. Morgan? So for more action, do you need us to set the levy tonight?
No, just approve the budget. Approve the budget that, because it has been published.
Yes.
So just approve the budget that's presented. And then what we'll do is, once you approve this, we'll get it published and the reporter and wherever else has to be published. And then what we'll do is we'll bring this back, make the adjustments. Annual meeting will come and at that time, there'll be a discussion, the community will vote on it. And then you take that as advisory and then you make the final decision anyways at a board meeting back toward.
All right. So I would look for board action then to approve the budget as presented.
Do you want to be initial budget?
Yeah.
Yes. I like that initial.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to approve our initial budget for 2016, 2017.
I will second that.
All right. Move and second to approve the initial. Any other questions or discussion? Mary Ann, roll call vote please.
Streeter?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Chisholm?
Yes.
Kowalski? Yes. Hack?
Yes.
And lastly on the agenda tonight is discuss and consider resolution for line of credit with National Exchange Bank and Trust.
They may not allow us to do this anymore because we've been doing it the past few years and never used it. They already have some of their money, so. But they're a great partner and it's something that we just want to have just in case. We had run down to about just under $200,000 at one time this year, but we were able to not at the short-term borrow. But it's something that we've done, so I recommend doing it even though the idea is not to use it.
The rate is the same as last year and so is the amount.
Do you think they won't approve it?
No, they've said that. I mean, it's like.
Oh, you've already got all the paperwork, it just needs some time.
Yeah, it'll be approved. It's just next year, really, you're going to ask for us that again and you're not going to use it. Because once they approve it, they're munk or they have to have that resource there for us. And if we're not going to use it, they could use that resource to invest somewhere else and maybe get better than 2.25. They don't get anything if we don't take it. So, but right now I think.
All right. So I'd look for board action then to approve the establishment of the line of credit with National Exchange Bank.
I'll make the motion.
All right. Additional questions or discussion? Mary Ann, roll call vote please.
Hack?
Yes.
Kowalski? Yes. Streeter?
Yes.
Will? Chisholm?
Yes. That is the end of the agenda tonight. And so therefore I would make a motion to approve it.
Make the motion.
I'll say. Roll call vote.
Streeter?
Chisholm?
Yes. That's, yes. Hack?
Yes.
Will?
Yes.
Which feels that means the same because we have been watching. We have some actually.